Good evening. And welcome to the West Orange Board of Education Public Board Meeting on Monday, August 28th, 2023. I would like to thank all of you who are here in person and those watching from home for joining us tonight. Ms. Flowers, would you please take the roll call?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Roll call, Mr. Ifker.
Here.
Mr. Stevenson.
Here.
Ms. Tony Cliff.
Here.
Vice President Warta.
Here.
Mr. Rock.
Here.
Notice of meeting, New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests are discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board on January 6, 2023. That said, notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and by email to the Star Ledger. That said, notice was posted in the lobby of the Administration Building of the Board of Education and posted on the district website. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and may be broadcasted on local TV and the district's website at a future date. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers. In consideration of the closed and public meeting of July 25th, 2023, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ifker. Any comments? Hearing no comments. Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Mr. Ifker.
Hi.
Mr. Stevenson.
Here.
Ms. Tony Cliff.
Epstein.
Vice President Warta.
No.
President Rock.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Moore, it is time for your report. Please share with us Ms. Report.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I have a very special announcement before we get into two presentations. Tonight, later in the agenda, the board has the opportunity to approve our newly appointed principal at Mount Pleasant Elementary School. With our board's permission, I'd like to take a moment to highlight the changing of the guard. First, congratu- first, I'd like to congratulate our retiring principal, Ms. Julie DeJocamo. Mr. Mr. Giacomo served our Mount Pleasant staff and students and their families for many years. Mr. Mr. Giacomo will be missed, and on behalf of the entire district, I thank her for all her service. And now, we can turn our attention and welcome an outstanding individual who will lead our elementary schools, our staff, our students, have a bright future with him at the helm. Our new principal of Mount Pleasant Elementary, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mark Lawrence. As Mark makes his way to the top, he has served our school district for over twenty years. Mark, is there a mic maybe?
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Thank you, members of the Board of Education. As I stand here tonight, I I'm honored to be chosen to lead Mount Pleasant Elementary School this year and in the future. I started here twenty years ago as a teacher at the high school. And to make it to this point with the support of all my colleagues and peers over the years, it really is a special honor. And I'm looking forward to that opportunity and to make sure that you know that you made the right choice and you'll see that soon. And I'm going to make you all proud. And I want to thank everyone that's been supporting me along the way, and that's including Mr. Hush, who I've worked side by side with for the last nine years, and without him, I wouldn't be in the position I am today. And thank you to my wife, Michelle, and my two children, Jude and Dane. I, without them as well, I do it all for them. So I look forward to servicing the the families of Mount Pleasant, the community, the students, the staff, and let's have a great school year. So thank you.
Thank you, Mark. We really look forward to you at the helm. We look forward to your time. And now, I'd like to introduce our esteemed Supervisor of Career Education and Library Science, Ms. Nancy Mullin, who will give us a presentation regarding the Carl D. Perkins Grant. Ms. Mullin, if you'd come to the front.
Can you hear me? Oh, good. Okay, sorry. Hi, good evening. I'm Nancy Mullin, Supervisor of Career Education and Library Science. And one of my responsibilities is the Perkins Grant. And we're going to talk about an audit that took place actually a couple of years ago, and we just heard back of the results. And just to give you a quick overview of the Perkins Grant, it is a federally funded program. It invests in secondary and post-secondary career and technical education or CTE programs to ensure that our students have access to high-quality CTE programs of study with a focus on program improvement alignment across grades five to twelve. Here in West Orange, we have the following eleven state-approved programs. And I just want to draw your attention to our website. You can go to my department website, which is linked here at the bottom, to learn more about each program. But just as an example, what you would see is information regarding what students would have to take in that particular program. There is a scope and sequence of three to four courses in each program, and many of them provide dual credit opportunities for students as well as the ability to earn stackable stackable credentials in that particular area. Very proud of the programs and our students, obviously. So West Orange School District was audited in November of 2021. We just received the results in August. But at the time, we knew we had done very well at the audit. They were reviewing the project period from 2019 through 2020. And that particular year, we received fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-three, uh, two hundred and seventy-three dollars from Perkins. I just want to let you know that although there's a lot of work involved with the grant throughout the year, over the last fourteen years since I've been in charge of the programs, we've received over seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So it is really well worth the effort. The findings and recommendations from the state, the first area that they look at are costs. And as I mentioned earlier, there were no fiscal findings, so we did very well in that area. Finding one, they looked at our board policies and found that there was one area that we needed to update, which is in career and technical education, and it has to do with the standards, and there are new standards now. And we're in the process of bringing that to the board. There will be some readings coming up to for that particular policy. The other area that they were asking us about is overseeing of the grant. And just to let you know what we go through, the Perkins Grant application guidelines are provided and used to determine eligibility and allowability of cost during our comprehensive local needs assessment, which I have every year. And during advisory committee meetings, I have two meetings per program throughout the year. So that's over twenty-two meetings that I have. So I inform students, staff, parents, business partners, and colleges of that particular area, and we go over the different areas and how we're going to spend funds. We also look at data because a major point is to improve student achievement, access and eligibility for the students, and that's what we do with the with the monies. Once the grant application is submitted and approved, the purchase orders are written out for each program, and there's continuous oversight of the Perkins monies carried out between myself and the business administrator's office. And this includes throughout the year reimbursements and also the final report. The other area that that they asked us to change or add to was on each purchase order, we have to indicate the program number, which is called the SIP code, which we've been doing for years. And now they've added that they want us to identify the room location of the technology or equipment that we're ordering, which is easy fix. We're already doing that. And when they come to visit us, they can go to that room and see the equipment. That's basically it. We have to send in the CAP or corrective action plan, just sharing what I just shared with you with the state. There are three areas you can see here. The first area, there were no questions of costs. Second two areas, we're going to add that board policy for career and tech that we have to, and the room locations for equipment and technology. And that's it. Any questions before I move on? Yes.
I just had a really quick question as well. Thank you very much for that information. To the extent that any of the the findings, do any of the findings mean that the district would have received less funding, or is the funding the same regardless of any findings of the audit?
There weren't any fiscal findings, so there's nothing that needed to. Sometimes I think when districts are audited, if there are fiscal findings, they may have to return money or be fined, and we didn't have any of that, and we haven't over the last fourteen years that I've been doing this.
Thank you.
Do we have enrollment numbers for the program? How many students are actually taking advantage of the program and enrolled in those programs?
Yes, every year I have to submit a New Jersey CTE SMART report to the state in the summer. And I believe off the top of my head, there was somewhere between six fifty and seven hundred students that are enrolled throughout those eleven programs. Thank you very much. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Shall we move back?
Well, I don't think there's a presentation for the next.
Yes.
She's, there's no slide presentation. Do you still want them on this side? No? No, there's no slides.
Thank you, Ms. Mullin. We appreciate it. As we move on, President Rock, as I move on with my report, I would like everyone to give a warm welcome to our Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Ms. Ebony Mendez, who will present the NJ Graduation Proficiency Assessment and update us on the preschool program. Thank you.
Good evening to our board and to our public. This evening, we're just giving an oral presentation on the NJGPA results versus a presented one. Just to review where we are right now with the data that we have received. In October, the board will see a full presentation of all of our data for the state assessment report, and that's where we'll be able to really unpack the data, provide some specifics around instructional strategies and how we're addressing tonight. It is meant to be a precursor because the state requires us within thirty days to at least say to the board, we've received these results. But the board can anticipate and expect a much more detailed formal presentation on all of our state assessment data in October. And so we did forward a presentation to the board, and I will just highlight some of the areas. For our classes of twenty-four, twenty-five, there are new graduation assessment requirements, and that is a graduation proficiency assessment. For those classes, beginning with those classes, all of our eleventh grade students will be required to take an assessment in March of that year of the spring and demonstrate proficiency. This is one of three pathways that can be used to demonstrate proficiency. One will be the assessment in eleventh grade. The second will be alternate assessments like SAT, ACT, et cetera, and the third would be student portfolios. This will count toward graduation. This is the first year, the NJGPA is counting toward graduation. Last year, it was a field test. As you heard, I'm sure there were some concerns around the field test. The cut scores were changed with this new year, so the two-year So the two-year comparison is present in the presentation. However, the state had some revisions that they were making just to ensure that the state assessment is what they were looking for. Of note, New Jersey is only one of 11 states that continues to require exit exams to graduate from high school. And again, this is the first pathway. The NJGPA is taking a look at ELA standards in grade 10, and it's taking a look at math, Algebra I, and geometry standards. Students who take the NJGPA in grade 11, if they don't pass it, have an opportunity to retake it. And again, there are students who are looking at other assessments to count as their graduation exiting exam. When we're looking at the NJGPA results for the spring of 2023, the state uses the language "graduation-ready." And so in line with that language for the March administration of the 23 school year for ELA, there were 84.6% of the students that the state deemed graduation-ready by grade 11 March with only this assessment. Again, there are other assessments to take into account. You'll see the percentages of those assessments in the October presentation. And for math, 49.1% are considered graduation-ready with this one assessment. Again, when we're taking a look at the comparison, for the field test, it said that 42.6% of the students were proficient. That was last year, 2022. But again, it was a field test. There were a lot of flaws that were found in that that caused those cut scores to be revised by the state. And this year, when it was administered in 2023, it went up to 84.6% considered graduation-ready with this one assessment. In math, in 2022, 45.4%, and in 23, 49.1%. When we take a look at our subgroups, it kind of mirrors the performance that... of our subgroups in the other assessments. The district, again, in ELA, 84.5% grade 11 on this one assessment. The state was about 80%. And when we take a look at our subgroups, the highest performing is two or more races at 100% proficiency, white 94.8%, Asian 94.7%, African-American 82.3%, and Hispanic 78.8%. For math, the district was at 49.1%, the state at 55. And again, the performance for the subgroups, similar to ELA. When we take a look at the performance of our economically disadvantaged and our students with disabilities for economically disadvantaged, our overall rate was at 84.1%. And economically disadvantaged was at 80% proficient. So that is a strong... A stronger performance of the economically disadvantaged subgroup as compared to other assessments. And students with disabilities, 67.4% proficient on this one assessment. Next steps in intervention, school counselors have already reviewed the NJGPA data. They've identified students not meeting this assessment's requirements. And students will have the opportunity to retake the assessment in the fall. The other assessments that count toward a pathway are PSAT, ACT, and SAT. So students can meet the graduation requirement with those assessments. And then for students who are with disabilities in the special education department, if they sat for the NJGPA, then they will be able to show an exemption moving forward if they did not pass it. So again, what are the pathways? Students can demonstrate proficiency on the NJGPA, pathway one. Pathway two, they can demonstrate proficiency on the other assessments, PSAT, ACT, and SAT, all of the acronyms. Or they can complete a portfolio. And students wishing to take the test again can do so in the fall. The second report will be on the Access for Ls. We haven't received all of the reports for Access for Ls. Again, we will report out in October during the state assessment presentation. But because we are required to give initial reports to the board within 30 days of receipt, tonight, we are just reviewing some high-level data. And so then the first thing that you have in your presentation is called a district frequency report. And this simply lets you know where the students are on the different levels, if they're entering, emerging, developing, expanding, bridging, or reaching. And this is their proficiency level. This helps us decide where we're placing students at one level of ESL. ESL is English as a Second Language. And so then the proficiency level will let us know what level of ESL services they need. So here, these assessments, the access, really measures the academic language of the content area. So the academic language of math, the academic language of science, of social studies, and of literacy. It measures where they are so that we can place them appropriately in their classes. I think it's important to understand our end-of-year enrollment over three years. We did provide that to the board. As it relates to enrollment, our end-of-year enrollment has significantly increased over the past two years with an enrollment of 231 Ls students at the end of '21. We had an increase of 80.1% by the end of 2023. We now have 416 students enrolled. That was very large. What does that impact? That impacts staffing. That impacts facilities, sections, classrooms, for class size for Ls and ESL classes. That has to range between six to eight. So we're not looking at the, you know, the class size structure of a traditional classroom. Also, state assessments. The Ls are in our state assessment results. They are exempt from ELA in year one in the country. So if you're in the country for the first time, you're exempt from ELA, but you're not exempt from math. So when we're thinking about 431 students and how many are in the country for the first year, and they're also taking our math assessments, this is a consideration as we're looking at these data. And we will go over that in detail again in October. It also impacts our professional development. We want to make sure that we provide sheltered instruction, professional development, Psyop to all of our teachers. And so then that would be something that would impact our budget. Also of note is how many students transfer into the district after we've already started. And so then, when we think about the '21 school year, 60 students transferred in after we began. In '22, 128. And last year, 168 transferred in after September. That's also important as it... as we consider our budgets, as we consider our staffing in particular, and maybe six sections, right? So when the board is approving for that additional sixth section, that's where it's coming from. We made some very significant revisions to our curriculum. You have there the key characteristics. Again, we'll go into depth about those key characteristics in October. And then the professional development and some programmatic implementations. And that would be it for NJGPA and access. Do you have any questions from the board?
Just keep in mind, we have a more thorough presentation coming in October.
No, no, no.
Don't get too deep into questions.
Hopefully my subject.
My request.
But I just want a quick clarification. Are you disaggregating? You mentioned the data of English-language learners as well as transfer students, presumably because it may have some impact on those overall scores, correct? So is that... Are you disaggregating the data for transfer students and English-language learners?
In this presentation, I'm not making a correlation between transfer students and their performance data. I was making a correlation between the number of students transferring in and potential impact on budget, staffing, and sections.
As it relates to the administration of the NJGPA?
Separate presentations. One was NJGPA. Forgive me if I wasn't clear. So I began with NJGPA. And then I moved into access, two separate assessments.
Got you. My apology. Thank you for that clarification. Is there prep for students for the NJGPA?
Prep in way... by way of standards. So the ELA section of the NJGPA thinks about the grade 10 standards. And the math section thinks about Algebra I and geometry standards. And so then through coursework and through how we support our students in learning those standards, that would be what is measured.
So it's a sole reliance on our curriculum to prepare students for the administration of the exam?
It's on our content, yes. In prior years, we had courses that would support. So if you remember HESPA back in those days, there were HESPA courses that we had that were ran in tandem with the content in order to prep students for the assessments because the state at that time did away with these types of assessments. We did away with those types of courses. But now that the state has reintroduced... This is the first year that they reintroduced it for a graduation requirement. Then we can certainly consider what course might run, test prep, if you will, would run in tandem with an NJGPA.
Every student is required to take the NJGPA?
Yes, every 11th grader in their spring year, in the spring of their year.
And if they don't pass the assessment, they can take the alternative assessment, PSAT, ACT?
They're already taking them. So they can meet it two different ways. They can meet it by NJGPA, which everyone must sit for. But all of them are also sitting for the PSAT and the SAT and the ACT. So the state is saying there are multiple pathways by which we can meet the requirement. This is the first year that the NJGPA, everyone must sit for it. And so then these are the results of that exam. And then we would present the PSAT and the ACT and the SAT to get a more comprehensive look at how students are meeting the requirement.
And last question. Thank you for the time. And thank you, board colleagues, for allowing me to ask these questions. You mentioned economically disadvantaged students. Is economically disadvantaged a metric that's required by the state for analysis?
All of the subgroups is a requirement for reporting out. And so then we must report out on the subgroups, which would normally include economically disadvantaged students with disabilities and Ls. However, when a number is under 10, we're not allowed to report out because they could be identified. And therefore, you did not hear us report out on Ls because the number was under 10. We were required, however, to report out on students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged because our rates are... our percentages of students in those subgroups exceed 10.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Ifferson. Oh, she can go next, please.
Okay, thank you. So 11th graders are taking this exam in the spring of their 11th grade year. When do they have time to prepare and retake? So they'll take it in the fall. But how do we know that they're going to be any more prepared? Because we've had a summer break. What's the intervention for these students? That's question one. And question two is, how do they... When you say they're sitting for the exam, is it only the people who have to take it again? Or are they all required? Or they... How are they identified to retake that?
Sure, I'll work my way backwards. So the students who have taken the NJGPA one time, if they have not passed the NJGPA, then they can retake it as an alternative in the fall. We are coming together as an administrative team this week. And as everybody begins to return, then we'll look at what interventions are going to be put in place for those students. And we'll be able to report out on those interventions in the October presentation with regard to who sits? Only those who have not passed the first administration.
Okay.
I'm sorry, did I answer that?
I answered both, right?
Yes.
Nope, I'm done. Thank you.
We'll go back to Mr. Ifferson.
Actually, I only have three questions. And the first one was just answered. So I appreciate your presentation. Can you go back to math for a second?
Yes.
Can you give the numbers again for math, please?
Sure. So for this current year, the percentage of students who passed and the NJGPA are 49.1%.
Okay. You know, the obvious question is just the same as for grade 11. What are we doing about it? What's the intervention?
So we'll present again on the specific interventions and all things math in the October presentation.
Okay. When I was a young man, there was no NJGPA. It was SATs. Is NJGPA something that... for which private courses are offered?
This is a new graduation requirement. Again, in 2022, it was a field test. Spring of '23, it was the first time. I'm certain that companies and everybody will come on board, Kaplan and all of those will come on board and start to say, oh, there's a new requirement in New Jersey. Therefore, we will partner with schools to assist the students as well as the district now taking that into consideration.
Thank you. So this is both a problem and an opportunity because a student can do the best he can at West Orange High School. But one town, two towns over, they're getting drilled twice a week. I mean, they're paying for it. It's almost like an unfair advantage. So I just hope that the intervention is something that can compete with that because other kids are coming in, you know, revved up, ready to go, knowing the questions. And I feel like it's not the case here with our 11th graders.
So we can partner, and we have in the past. And we can continue to do that and expand our partnerships with Kaplan's and with these other partnerships that allow for us to really focus in on the drilling down of test. We can also continue with our peer... with our tutoring. We have different tutoring opportunities, such as paper that we have for middle school. We can consider pushing that up into the high school. We have our actual content strategies. We have the ability to think about adding a course, again, to run in tandem with our regular courses for test prep, if you will, or preparation for NJGPA. So these are some high-level strategies that we will consider. But we will consider them. And we will put in everything that we need to do so that our students can compete and so that our students can be better.
Thank you very much.
President Rock, notwithstanding Mr. Ifferson's question with respect to the percentage, just for clarification, Mr. Mendez, the... the... both in ELA and in math, this examination, the state-required examination, aligns with the curriculum standards set by the state, correct?
Yes.
So notwithstanding this need for supplementation of outside and external resources, if we didn't have those resources, then there's a correlation between...
Our math scores and the NJGPA?
Our math scores and the delivery of an existing curriculum instruction that's deemed appropriate and sufficient by the state.
I think there is an alignment between how our standards are being measured. I also think we need to consider that this is one assessment, one snapshot of the various assessments for graduation requirement. We will work with our students. We will continue to look at our content. We will continue to make revisions and modifications as necessary so that we can make sure that when students are assessed, that there is a lesser of a gap between students' performance in class versus students' performance on an assessment. So all of those things have to be assessed.
And maybe this question will make the presentation in October much shorter. But with respect to the alternative assessments, there is no passing score on the SAT or ACT, right? So is it... If the student sits for the exam, does that mean that they meet the requirement?
I do believe there are requirements for the AFACT, the SAT, and the PSAT. Let me see if I have them with me here. If I do not, I can forward those to the board. I do believe they were on the first slide.
And just for your October presentation, if there is in fact a a score that's required for passing as an alternative administration, when can you share that with us in October? And then can you also share what percentage of our students on a first attempt? I don't know if it's necessarily for a first attempt, but on any attempt, actually meet that requirement for the alternative requirement?
Absolutely. And on your page, that... the slide that says classes of 2024, 25 high school graduation assessment requirements, there's a table and you'll see the scores there. I will gladly provide those again in October to include what percentage of our students are meeting the requirement via the ACT, SAT, and PSAT.
Thank you, Mr. Mendez.
You're welcome. It's on the first content slide. So it's classes of 24, 25 high school graduation assessment requirements. There's a table on the right. And there you will see the assessments listed and the cut scores.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Just a question about the access for the ELLs. Is that a requirement as well? Or is that just to see where they're at, their levels are at from the K to 12?
Access for Ls is a state assessment, just like NJSLA would be administered to all students. The access must be administered to all English-language learners. It is for placement so that we'll know where to place them. It is for us to also determine exiting criteria. So a student who scores a 4.5 on the access, that will help us gauge whether we want to exit student and stop providing services. The state requires us to provide services to all English-language learners if they're scoring below a 4.5. So once they meet that exit criteria, then we can begin to transition them from an ESL services-type model. model to the general education model without the additional supports.
Okay. How long, this is, is this the, the first year then for access as well? Or access has been around?
We've been in access for many years. Now, there are targets that we must meet for access. Um, those haven't been released yet. So in October, once we receive that data, then we can inform the board of how we are, um, meeting the state targets. And usually we do, we fare very well with meeting the state targets on access.
And so for this, are there programs to assist our ELLs, uh, to, you know, do well on these? Or we just want them to be wherever they're at and we want to make sure that they're getting the services that they need?
Correct. We would not, um, provide, um, test study for access. Access really just, um, measures the academic language of the content areas. So ESL would be where they're receiving that content instruction on academic language. And then the assessment would help us, uh, determine where they place on the continuum of language proficiency and where they place as it relates to exiting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Ebony, if you will, I think we should move to a, the next presentation would be preschool update.
Sure.
And thank you for that. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Um, and I just want to thank Ms. Martino who helped with the, um, data. Uh, she's in that role, our Director of Assessment and Accountability. So, um, the presentation that you see, she helped, um, get all of that data for the board. Uh, I just wanted to honor her in that role. Um, with regard to, uh, preschool, uh, this evening, I'm going to provide the board and the community with an update on the district's preschool expansion efforts. Uh, as part of these efforts, we continue to partner with various providers, private preschool providers uh, in and in our surrounding communities in order to provide early childhood services to three and four-year-old students. It is a part of our preschool expansion goal, which is to serve approximately nine hundred preschool students. Uh, within five years, we are entering year two. Um, this would be at no cost to our parents via a mixed delivery model. Mixed delivery model means that we have some district classes, but majorly in West Orange, we have private providers. Why? Because our district schools do not have the capacity to have preschool within, um, our schools. We don't have space. And so then we are partnering with our private providers in order to be able to uh, meet the need of preschool and early childhood for our families. It is also a requirement of the state to have a mixed delivery model. The district cannot choose to just have district classes. We must partner with private preschool providers and we must partner with Head Start. So for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, this is our second year, um, in, um, preschool expansion. This year, we will serve three hundred and thirty preschool students across ten sites. Uh, the ten sites is a revision from the anticipated preschool sites that we posted in May and that the board approved on May eighth. Um, the preschool expansion process with the state is an expedited process. As you remember, last year, we had three weeks to move from no preschool to preschool, right? We didn't find out about our preschool budget, um, until three weeks before we had to open. And in that projection, in that plan, we had to project out over five years, who would be our potential providers for five years. The district did that, um, for, uh, in order to meet the state requirements of receiving the aid. In turn, our private providers are required to meet all facilities requirements for licensing and permits in order to safely open their schools based on the projected start date. Um, this year, the board does see a revision in the sites due to delays in construction. One of our projected provider, uh, preschool locations, uh, was not able to open on time. And therefore the district had to reassign the fifty-four registered students across three new locations. Uh, these locations are on tonight's board agenda for approval. They are Helping Hands, which is located in West Orange, one classroom for fifteen students. Primrose of West Orange, also one classroom, fifteen students, and Benay Abraham in Livingston, two classroom, thirty students. Of note, two of those sites were a part of our three-year plan, so they had already been submitted to the state. We just accelerated them by one year and, uh, the third site, Benay Abraham, is new to our partnership. Um, all parents have been notified, um, of the reassignment. We're pleased to announce that we continue on track with our goal of beginning our preschool classes with minimal delay. Uh, specifically the new sites, the second week of September and Peanut Shell by September twentieth. Uh, with regard to staffing, seven of the eight staff members have been hired. Uh, they attended the professional development help last week that provided training for curriculum implementation. Um, and for that one remaining staff member, resumes and interviews are in process. And we expect to fulfill that position, um, prior to opening. Uh, all mis- instructional materials have been redirected and are being distributed to those sites. Our supervisor of early childhood has met with each of the providers for onboarding to include student rosters, completing state-required documentation, our budget plans, and to review curriculum and instruction expectations. Uh, preschool tours and open houses will begin as early as tomorrow evening. With regard to transportation, the majority of students were placed at sites within the two-mile radius. One location, um, that will be transported is, uh, Benay Abraham, which was already included in the budget, those buses. So there is no increase to the, um, budget or, um, further impact, um, to our, um, to our fiscal responsibility. Uh, we do understand the impact and apprehension caused by the timing of this decision. The district did have to pivot, um, with regard to making sure that we could reassign our families. Um, this is, again, our, uh, end of our first year of implementation and lessons learned. Looking back, when we're thinking about what needs to take place as we move forward. Uh, as a district, we are examining whatever flaws there are in this preschool process. Um, recommendations will include considerations for new construction. If a site is a new construction, perhaps we may wait a year um, before bringing them on board. Um, partnering with the zoning board and the town permit offices so that we know for certain if our private providers are moving, um, on time with, um, obtaining their permits and, uh, a reasonable expectation for opening on time for our parents. And then maybe instituting a direct liaison between the district and the prospective partners. Um, when we, uh, reached out to our parents, uh, we did, uh, thank them for their, uh, sincere patience and understanding. Uh, as our teams were working together to ensure a successful start, uh, to the school year. Uh, while this was a, a rocky transition, um, that we experienced here with this one, uh, we do understand, um, that, uh, we have diligently committed to and making sure that all of the students will be served. Our commitment to our families is, uh, stands strong. Um, it will not, um, waver. Uh, we know we want to provide the best, uh, quality preschool, both in instruction and the facilities, and we will continue with that commitment.
I thank you. Um, does anyone on the board, perhaps President Rock, if it's okay with you, can ask a question?
Yep. So, just a question and a comment. Uh, the goal is to serve nine hundred families over a course of five years. This is year two. Uh, so are we on pace to meet the nine hundred mark? What percent, what, what number of families were served in the prior school year? What number of families do you intend to serve this year?
I believe last year in the first year it was sixty students and this year we're at three thirty. We are making, um, significant progress. Um, I will not be as bold as to predict what kind of progress we will make um, in the next year because it is dependent on the providers and their readiness to, um, um, open their facilities. I will say, however, West Orange, um, has a very strong commitment from its community members and its community providers. Just as we were able to, um, see and experience that, uh, three of our year three providers were able to accelerate and come on board. Um, with, you know, in a short timeframe for year two. Uh, we expect that of these partnerships, they already are identifying additional classrooms for year three and they're already committing those classrooms. So we are well on track. Um, our proposal to the state, while it read five years, we were on track with our numbers to complete that by the end of year three. So if we have to use the whole five years, okay. Um, but our original plan was by the end of year three. So I think we will use the five years. I think we're doing well and I think, um, we're learning about, um, what we have to adjust and fix so that it doesn't repeat. Um, and again, we're committed to doing that.
And, and lastly, with respect to, uh, the comments about, uh, some of the, this is a new system for West Orange. And so obviously as you're, uh, going through a process of a mixed delivery system where it's not all of our seats. And obviously, uh, you learn things as you go throughout the process. Uh, so that can be challenging, particularly in a community where we have not had pre-K prior. And so it's, it's reasonable to assume that as the, uh, pre-K progresses, that we learn new things to incorporate with respect to both policy and practice. And hopefully there's a sufficient nexus of that so that, uh, best practices can be established for, uh, the existing people who oversee pre-K and those that will, will oversee it in the future. So, uh, for, for me, I appreciate the comments around, uh, just the ongoing learning process that, uh, you and your staff have, and that's just your staff, but the entire district may have learned with respect to uh, managing this process. I think, uh, my board colleagues would agree that, uh, early childhood is critical in this community, pre-K is critical in this community. Uh, as a, as a parent who had to pay for a private pre-K that was not in West Orange, this is certainly a value to families in West Orange. And the more we learn as we go through the process, I think, only enhances the system. So certainly appreciate, uh, that acknowledgement of that. Uh, and then lastly, with respect to this mixed delivery system, you mentioned that one of the reasons that, this beside, beside the fact that it's a requirement of the state, that, uh, that we have private providers. What percentage currently is private providers and what percentage is district? You mentioned we don't have necessarily sufficient classrooms to maybe have a greater percentage of that mixed delivery system. And if you don't know those percentages, that's fine. I, I apologize for that question, which may appear to say, to have it. But I guess a better question would be, is there a maximum, maximum allocation that the district, uh, can have? So what's our cap if we got to a point where we had additional classroom facilities and wanted to utilize our own seats relative to private provider seats?
There are, I'm sorry, I'm counting. There are twenty-two classrooms that will be implemented in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Four of those classrooms are districts. So if someone would calculate that percentage, seventy-seven percent are private providers. Thank you. I, this is Ms. Doreen, our supervisor of early, uh, childhood, um, who, um, is certainly a partner in this endeavor and, um, overseeing, right, um, our movement forward. Uh, so here we have four district classrooms. There is no regulation that states how many must be um, district or caps us. What it does say is that we must have district, we must have private, we must have Head Start. So that's what the regulation says. When we, uh, began the committee work for preschool in our community, one of the major concerns from our community was will we put our private providers out of business? And our commitment to our West Orange providers was, no, we will not. We will partner with you and make sure that your businesses continue to thrive. And so therefore, that is a very important commitment from the public schools to our community members. Um, because many of them have had their daycares, their preschools in existence way before preschool expansion aid ever was released. And so then, um, the idea of having some district classes and private provider classes is not just on regulation. It is also on taking care of our community members.
So I would just suffix that comment, Mr. Menendez, by just saying that really highlights the point even more the need for the district to have, uh, higher levels of oversight in the partnerships, higher levels of, of learning, uh, because I don't know if the community makes that disconnect, right? The community has an expectation for the district to provide and perform in a certain way. And they may not know all of the inside baseball and all of the, the sausage making, so to speak, with respect to how these things break down. You know, they believe that this is something that's being provided by the district and so forth, the expectations on the district, right? And so I think, again, your comment around the ongoing learning process, I think is really key. So that we meet the expectations of families and ensure that, uh, the service delivery of pre-K, uh, with the West Orange, uh, public schools kind of stamp of approval on it is really critical to make sure that, uh, both those policies, practices and the system overall, uh, serves the best needs of our families.
Absolutely. Agreed.
Yep. Um, so first, uh, first of all, I would like to commend the parents. Uh, the fact that August tenth, that we didn't know exactly where your kids were going to be is not acceptable. Um, so about a week and a half ago, I requested a meeting with Mr. Moore and the pre-K team to just get a heads up of what's going on and why this happened and why this didn't happen. And, you know, I drove around town as I always do, looking at this and that. And I, my colleagues know how I, how I feel. Um, we had a very honest discussion in our closed session. And there are fl- there were flaws in the system. Obviously, there were flaws in the system. I do commend the administration for the way they scrambled to get everything done in two weeks. I mean, I couldn't have done it. Uh, it was really commendable. Um, but I really did have the same feeling I had, uh, when we booked, voted on the budget. The budget passed three-two. I was in the minority. And it was something that was inherited by Mr. Moore. So I couldn't really say, you know, I don't like this budget. What did you do? Because, you know, the timing wasn't right. That's not really his budget. And I feel the same way about this process. Uh, this is something that was inherited. Um, and I would say that his predecessor could have done better in preparing us for this process. Um, so that's really all I wanted to say. I commend you for, everybody's happy now. I, I commend you for, for really at the last minute pulling everything together. Um, and, uh, you know, we know what's wrong with this process and it's very fixable. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Um, I just had, uh, I didn't hear any mention about what the income, income requirements are. Are we still doing that, uh, what I, uh, right, Head Start programs and, uh, my apologies, I'm kind of lost for words right now, but the income requirement.
It's a lot.
So, um,
How we prioritize, we gotta.
Right, how we.
There's not enough seats for every student.
Exactly. How we prioritize the seating and the availability for the students and how the income requirements are, you know, how that breakdown is by year because we're doing, um, we're, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's okay. I'll try to, and I'll try to.
I think you understand what my question is.
Missing anything, then please follow up.
Thanks.
So in year one only, we, um, had very limited seats. We had sixty seats. And therefore we began with our, uh, two schools that were Title One. This was a part of our application process. It was a part of the criteria. It was a part of the rubric that gave us more points as well to get and qualify for the aid. So in year one only, because we had limited seats, we began with our Title One schools as was, um, asked of us in the aid. In year two, which is the year we're in now, everybody is being seated there. It's first come, first served. Any family who applies, um, will be, uh, given a seat in that first come, first served order. And that's being defined as someone who fully completes the registration process and submits all of their documents to say that they truly are a West Orange resident. Um, we do have a waiting list. Um, and on that waiting list, um, we still have some empty seats. I think, uh, I can't recall how many empty seats we have. And if you don't know that off the top of your head, that's okay. Oh, last year was one thirty-five. Okay, so correction. Last year we had one hundred and thirty-five students, sixty district. That's then where I'm getting the sixty from and the balance was in the providers. Uh, we do have a waiting list. We do have some seats still that are open. We will begin to now work through the waiting list to, um, start to seat those parents. And then as we open and we see if everybody actually showed up, as in, you know, any school year, some parents might have moved or whatever the case is, then we'll see what those seats are and then we will place the students on the waiting list. As we move forward to year three, it would also be open, not to income requirements, just first year, first served. Now, with the other part of that question, um, Head Start has, uh, in year one, they had one location. Now, with the other part of that question, um Head Start has, uh, in year one, they had one location. And in year two, this year, we're expanding to two locations. They serve our neediest um families. And there is um an income cap at Head Start. So students who attend Head Start, those families are not permitted to make more than whatever that cap is. And so then, again, this is part of PEA. They're saying we have to meet the needs of all of our community and this is the way that they are executing that.
Do we know what our number or uh percentage is for that?
For Head Start? We have, um, this first year, we had, um, well, this year we'll have three classrooms, forty-five students at the Montclair location and we'll have two classrooms, thirty students at the Orange location. So that's a total of seventy-five students of the three thirty. And I'm sorry, I don't know the percentage math off the top.
Thank you. That, that's all. Thank you very much.
I don't have any questions, but just wanted to say thank you to, to you and your team for this. This is a massive undertaking to implement this program. I, I think in the best case, there's going to be rocky moments and we had some this summer. But I'm glad to hear that we learned some lessons and I'm particularly glad that everybody was seated with a, a partner. And so I look forward to things opening this year and things expanding next year. And thank you again to you and your team for all of your work on this.
Thank you, and I'd just like to publicly thank our team. Again, our supervisor of ELA, our principal of B, um, ELC, um, our partners that came on board with us, our transportation, our BA, um, all of our members, buildings and grounds, who really just came together to the walkthroughs and even the um township, our township came alongside us and walked through um the, the facilities just to make sure we were seeing it this time um with a good eye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Rock. Um, I just wanted to uh same sentiments, thank you to um the administration here at West Orange High. I think uh Robert Ifker and um Mr. Eric Stevenson, thank you for your comments. Uh, you're absolutely right. Our process is tightening up and we will tighten up. And uh, you know, whether I'm new or old, I'm in the mix with you one hundred percent. And I will uh do that with our parents and also staff. Um, I would like to thank our assistant superintendent for her presentation. It's not easy, but I appreciate it. And um, of course, as you mentioned, uh, Kalisha Dorlene, who is a very special person to our district. She's done a terrific job and she has entered preschool for us and helped us start that process as well. So thank you. And for the first presentation, um, Michelle Martino, who was at once an assistant principal, but now is in charge of date and assessment, who I will try to partner with very closely as we monitor our progress um on academic achievement this year. I want to thank her as well for being here and uh taking part. And thank you, President Rock. I know uh our report was long today, but um necessary, so I appreciate it. I, I actually asked for this as a favor and this is kind of a surprise. We haven't started yet, school hasn't started yet, but I just want to tell you about West Orange students. We have two in the back that um are up to being our student liaisons with the board and of course our advisor, um, Ms. Catherine Connors. Um, I'd like to, if they don't mind, come up to the podium really quickly, just introduce themselves to the public. Uh, as I'm very proud that they don't have to be here and they chose to be here. That's the type of students we have. And I'll tell you what, I'm a, I'm very proud superintendent of that. Do you guys mind coming to the podium and saying hello?
No, you're all right. Come on, come on. Get used to it.
Could just say your name in the class.
Oh, hello, my name is Kanah James. I'm part of the twenty twenty-four class, I'm going to be a senior. Uh, I just want to say I'm very grateful for the opportunity to be here and, you know, give the student input on like how we feel and try to improve the education system. Thank you, thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Leila, I'm a rising senior. I'm so excited to be here and bring diversity to the school and make it more of an open environment and everything. So thanks for having me.
I thank you Mountaineers for allowing me to put you on the spot. I thought it came with the job since I'm, you know, now the superintendent. But.
Questions for them? Did Mr. Ifker wanna ask some hard-hitting questions?
They didn't even start yet.
I, I, I was so impressed with them. Yeah. That I wanted to know if they had any political aspirations.
Well, they got up and they were right on the spot. Thank you very much and thank you for allowing me a little chance to be proud of you and a little embarrassing. I appreciate you. Thank you, President Rock, appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, for your report. Thank you, Ms. Mullins and Mr. Mendez for, for your reports. And thank you very much to the student liaisons for being here. Um, we look forward to working with you throughout this school year. All right, uh, from the board, do we have any committee reports tonight?
I have a few things to report on, but I can wait if anybody else has anything.
All right, Ms. Werth, I think you're up.
Okay, so just a couple of updates. Hold on one second. Just a reminder that the green, green ribbon week will be September eighteenth to twenty-second. Uh, we also have um some PR uh updates. Notice uh that we do have a new breakdown on YouTube, um, time segments to make it easier, uh, the breakdown of public comments. So I thought that was a very interesting update and thank you uh for that. Um, making it easier for uh people to follow along on, at home, um, and watch those clips later on and watch specific time segments if they'd like. Um, I do also wanna point out that Ms. Cummings, who is also a part of our PR, um, did make a write-up. Um, it's a, a, a write-up that has been up on our website since uh my election, I believe, as well. Ms. Uh, Terry Trig Scales, uh, our predecessor, she uh actually made it a very big point to have this particular article that was given to us by the New Jersey School Board Association um about thirteen things our school board members wishes that people knew about them. Um, I would recommend that the community take a look at that on the website um or also on our Facebook, official West Orange High School Facebook page. Um, it's just a quick thirteen points. If uh you had any questions or any desire to be on the school board, that's a great place to start, to look and ask questions. Um, uh, we do have a conference coming up. A workshop would be in Atlantic City. We are already all registered. Thank you very much for that, Ms. Flowers. And um, we, I, I do particularly enjoy these three days. Uh, it's a lot of workshops, a lot of updates, a lot of learning that goes on in those three days. So very excited for that. Um, and I believe that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Werth. And thank you for mentioning that uh thirteen things we wish people knew about board members. I've had several people come up to me and say, that was an amazing op-ed you wrote and I wish I could take credit, uh, but like Vice President Wirtz has said, I, I think it was our prior president, Ms. Terry Trig Scales, that found it from the New Jer, New Jersey School Boards Association and originally published it, uh, so I, I cannot take credit for that. But it is important, so if you haven't read it, check it out. Um, and with that, a brief board president's report, uh, just want to highlight the fact that our classrooms open up for students next week on Wednesday, September sixth. Summer is unfortunately over. Uh, over the next few days, communications to our families regarding schedules and course information will be made. I know that our administrators and staff have worked over the summer preparing for the new school year. I, along with my colleagues, wish everyone well and anticipate a successful school year. So, uh, next we will have questions from the public on agenda items only. Any community member who would like to make comments or ask questions, please come to the podium at this time. Uh, please state your name and home address for the record and then begin your comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have any members of the public here in the audience tonight who wish to make a public comment? All right, seeing none, uh, we will move on to our resolutions. May I have a motion to approve the personnel items A-one through A-eights?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ifker. Uh, I want to take a moment to congratulate the following retirees. Jay Alexander, a paraprofessional at Betty Madalena Early Learning Center for her nine years of service. And Maria Cruz, a custodian on the night shift at Redwood Elementary for her twenty-three years of service. Thank you all for your service to the West Orange students and our school community. Best wishes to you on behalf of the Board of Education and welcome to the club where every day is Saturday. Uh, is there any discussion?
Just congratulations.
All right, hearing no other discussion, Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Mr. Ifker?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yeah.
Ms. Tunnycliff?
Yes.
Vice President Wirtz?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next may I have a motion to approve the curriculum and instruction items B-one through B-six?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Wirtz, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Tunnycliff, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Mr. Ifker?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Tunnycliff?
Yes.
Vice President Wirtz?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and may I have a motion to approve the finance items, special services items A-one through three and business office items B-one through fifteen?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Tunnycliff, uh, is there any discussion?
Uh, just a thank you to the donations. Um, I don't know if I stole the thunder from you, Mr. Rock.
Right ahead.
Okay, so just thank you. Uh, we are uh accepting uh from our donors, AFD contract furniture to Kelly Elementary, uh, five hundred dollars and two round tables. Um, and then Morris Plain School District donated to our school district, um, smart boards. So thank you very much for that, for those donations and our school district really appreciates them.
All right, uh, Ms. Flowers, would you please take the roll call?
Mr. Ifker?
Here.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr., excuse me, Ms. Tunnycliff?
Yes.
Vice President Wirtz?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much to all of my board colleagues for that work. Next up, we have petitions and hearings of citizens for any agenda or non-agenda item that you may wish to discuss. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please approach the podium at this time and state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Rock, I'm sorry, before we move on to that, may I make a comment about, um, I made a no vote in the beginning of our meeting.
The minutes?
Yes, the minutes and I just wanted to, uh, you know, give a, I, I did not consult with my core colleagues uh about this no vote for myself. Um, um, I was not present for the meeting, um, the, our last meeting where there were some things discussed. Uh, public came out. Um, and while I do support Mr. Moore and this administration, I did feel the need to vote no on this particular agenda. I did feel that I could have had more information prior to the meeting. Um, and just kind of feeling that more transparency could have happened in this process. Um, and so also I could have been better prepared to address this with the public or have some better clarification on how this decision came to fruition. But regardless, um, I just wanted to explain my no vote and make a public comment on that. Um, doesn't take away from the trust that I have in Mr. Moore and the administration, but I just wanted to make that clear, um, that for my no vote.
Thank you.
President Rock? Yep. It pleases the board. May the board secretary, the, the, uh, uh, from my own recollection, Ms. Werth is making a comment about her no vote on a previously cast vote. What was that? That, that was, that, that was a vote to accept the minutes?
Yes.
Correct. So I just find during the no vote, I did not accept those minutes, so that's, that's all.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is there anyone from the audience that wanted to speak a public comment? All right, do I have any closing comments from my colleagues up here?
Um, if I could, I just wanted to thank everybody for the presentations, for Ms. Mendez and um Ms. Mullins. Um, I don't know if anybody knows how terrific our CTE program is and Ms. Mullins does an amazing job. Um, at the end of the year, there were several things that I had an opportunity to attend. One of them was this fabulous fashion show and to see some of the things that our students are doing here in the high school is just extraordinary. So I'm super proud of this program and I just wanted to say thank you for all her work. I know how hard it is to write grants and keep them coming in year after year and she's done a fabulous job. And I just also want to thank um Ms. Mendez and her team and of course, all of the new partners who've stepped up to um open their preschool programs a year, um, a year early for us. We really truly appreciate this. So on behalf of all of the families, um, and the children who will be going there, we just wanted to say thank you for everything you've done to uh make this work this, this year, so.
Mr. Mr. Rock, I just wanna again acknowledge uh our new superintendent. He's not new to our community, not new to our district, but certainly as we begin a new school year, uh, he is new to the superintendency. So again, I want to uh congratulate and acknowledge uh Mr. Hayden Moore as he uh has guided our district now since uh, I think the end of August, I'm sorry, end of April, and now preparing to lead us into a new school year. So, Mr. Moore, Godspeed. Um, best of wishes and uh, you know, much successes. You begin your, uh, you continue your tenure as superintendent as we commence a new school year. Uh, and I think, as you know, you have uh the majority support of the board, full support of the board and certainly the community's uh backing in the endeavors. We just appreciate your leadership, if I may speak for my board colleagues, uh, as we endeavor in the new school year.
Uh, thank you. I thank you to this board, I enjoy being on this team. It is a terrific team. Um, I love the fact that you all have your own personalities and your own opinions, which makes a community. I'm uh very grateful to you, but I'm very grateful to this community, um, my students, my colleagues. Um, although I, I thank you and I feel very confident in my school year because it doesn't feel unfamiliar. Sometimes when you're from the block, it's a good feeling. I feel like I'm home. I feel like it's a, I'm working with a group of people that I feel that have my best interests as I have their best interest at heart. So I appreciate it and I'm happy to be a part of this new team. I love this community, I love the parents and I, um, and obviously everyone knows how I feel about the students. And that's just um because we have a special thing here at West Orange. So keep doing what you're doing. Um, keep me on my toes as I see you're gonna do. But um, I wanna be on.
Yeah, you're right.
But I'm okay with being on my toes if it means my kids get uh the best. So I'm okay with it, uh, I accept it and I'm ready to roll, ready to roll.
Thank you and thank you, Mr. Moore. It's hard to believe it's four short months ago that you transitioned into this position, uh, but it feels like you've been here forever. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Wirtz, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed?
Oh.
Thank you for joining us tonight, our meeting is now adjourned.